Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, November 15, 2016. If you please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Clint?
Here.
Councilmember Manning?
Here.
Councilmember Demmer?
Here.
Councilmember Geisler?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Wells?
Here.
Mayor Cook?
Here. Thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Demmer. Any discussion, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is adopted. And the very first item on our agenda this evening is a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And this is all good news. The city of Coon Rapids has again received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report. And, let's see here, where am I? So we are just going to read this. So the award is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The award has been awarded to Francine Hanson, then accounting supervisor, as she was primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFR. The CAFR was reviewed by an impartial panel of the Finance Officers Association to assure that it meets the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users to read the report. Although this is the 39th consecutive year that the city has received the award, it does not lessen the effort that goes into preparing the report and incorporating suggestions from previous reviews. So actually, if we could get Francine to come up front here. I brought my iPad along in case I had to read this again, but I think I got it. So nicely done, and this is the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. Here, let's do that again, Peter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, and now you are in a different role now, right, since Kevin left?
Yes, I took on the city's accounting manager position.
All right, and everything's going well?
Well...[212.12][212.12](laughter)
Okay, good enough, thanks Francine![216.23][216.23](laughter)
Well, ask the finance director, very well.
Very well, very well's a good answer, okay, all right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.[225.01][225.01](applause)
What do they say, never ask a question unless you know the answer?[239.01][239.01](laughter) All right, so, next item on our agenda, not nearly as fun, but the approval of the minutes from November 1st.
I'll move adoption of the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are approved. And, get back to my annotations, and we'd... This is like the first meeting we've ever not had a consent agenda. Nice. All right, well, so then our next item is to hold a public hearing on liquor licenses, liquor license fees, and consider ordinances and resolutions setting the 2017 fees and charges. So, we're looking at adjusting certain fees and building inspection fees, they were introduced and are now being presented for adoption, along with resolutions which include fees not set by ordinance. Rates for the civic center, ice arena, golf course, and utility funds are set by separate city council action throughout the year, and primarily the fees for 2017 have been adjusted by the 2016 annual adjustment of 2.5 percent, with a few exceptions rounding most of them off to $5. There were a couple that went down, that was nice, you know. The reinspection fees have been reduced at each level from the building inspections, and then they added a new fee this year for the inspection of the tile tub and shower pan, which is a big deal when you're doing bathrooms. So, is there anything that you want to highlight in there, or should we start with the public hearing for the... Okay, we'll just start with the public hearing regarding the fee increases for the on-sale 3-2 malt liquor and off-sale 3-2 malt liquor licenses. So is there anybody here? We'll open the public hearing, in case anybody is here to address council this evening regarding the fee increases for on-sale 3-2 malt liquor and off-sale 3-2 malt liquor licenses. Anybody here to address council in public hearing for that? Seeing none, we're closed, public hearing, and then we're looking at the adopting the other ordinances and resolutions.
Do them separately?
Please.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Clint?
I'll move we adopt an ordinance to revise certain license fees, service fees, related charges, to be effective January 1, 2017.
Second. Motion by Clint, second by Manning. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Okay.[429.34][429.34](laughter)
Three more![431.34][431.34](laughter)
Establishing permit and inspection fees for the building inspections division as authorized by Minnesota Statute Section 16B.62, subdivision 1, effective January 1, 2017.
Second.
Motion by Clint, second by Geisler. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
I'll take it.
Councilmember Demmer?
Move to adopt Resolution 16-125, establishing certain fees and charges effective January 1, 2017.
Second. Motion by Demmer, second by Manning. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
I would additionally move to adopt Resolution 16-124, establishing certain fees and charges for use of CTN studio facilities, effective January 1, 2017.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. That was all four of those, right? Yep. Next item on our agenda, under new business, is to order preparation of feasibility report and preparation of plans for Project 17-1, street reconstruction. Now normally I would read all the streets that this includes, but between the three or four of these, there's like 60 streets. It's like a dozen cul-de-sacs on one of the other ones, so, we're just going to say that if... You'll get a notice if you were going to do your street next year, right? Is that what's going to happen?
That's what's going to happen.[551.54][551.54](laughter)
But, Project 17-1 is 3.1 miles of residential streets, and these are the ones that are generally east of Dog... Between Dogwood and University, and from 101st up to about 105th Avenue, with the exception of Dogwood that'll run up to Egrid. And, we're just looking for a motion to...
Your Honor?
Councilmember Manning?
I move adoption of Resolution 17-1, sub 3, ordering preparation feasibility report, and...
What, you want to do them both?
Might as well.
Okay.
17-1, sub 6, ordering preparation of plans.
I'll second both.
Motion by Manning, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Councilmember Demmer?
Had someone ask me about how we decide to pick which streets we do, so I just wanted to mention on air that there's a line here, "Streets within the project area vary from 45 to 50 years old," and that there will be assessments for the people living on those streets, but they're graded based on the condition of the streets, and they try to repair them with a mill and overlay if they can, which is cheaper, and if they can't, then they'll do the full repair. Did I do that justice?
I would say most of that is accurate.
Oh no!
You're never going to get it all with that guy, I'll tell you that right now![643.66][643.66](laughter)
Based upon the age of the roads, a mill and overlay really isn't a good option for this. So yes, between mill and overlay, seal coats, those sort of things, but this is just the time due to the age that they're due for reconstruction. There's also some water main work that's needed in these areas as well.
Excellent.
But mostly good, thank you.[664.13][664.13](laughter)
B+. I'll take it.[667.13][667.13](laughter)
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so that was Project 17-1. And now we're looking at ordering preparation of feasibility report and preparation of plans for Project 17-2, MSA street reconstruction. This is 1.5 miles of Minnesota state aid streets, and I will read this one because it will impact a lot of drivers. 101st Avenue from Foley Boulevard over to University Avenue, 121st Avenue from Foley Boulevard over to University Avenue, and Shenandoah Boulevard from 122nd Avenue to 124th Lane.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I would move adoption of Resolution 17-2, per ends 3, ordering preparation of feasibility report, and Resolution 17-2, per end 6, ordering preparation of plans.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Any discussion on this? Councilmember Clint?
I have a question for Mr. Hiller. So we just talked about the age of the street, but then you take a section of Shenandoah, which was all same age of the whole Boulevard, why doesn't the whole Boulevard get it?
Councilmember Clint, this area is worse than what's surrounding it. So based upon either some geotech information, some soils in this area, there are always little spots, and I think you might be familiar with one in one of these other projects, where portions of the roadway break down due to soils or grades or utility issues beneath the ground. So, if you recall, all this year was MSA, we were going to back away from that, we were great rates on bonding, another advance through state aids, we were able to advance this one and keep moving with our MSA. We didn't want to get too overboard with that, but this segment was in definite need of repair, but when you compare, if you drive it, you'll definitely see the difference as you approach the intersection and the curve to the south. This is just a bad spot.
Okay.
Mr. Hammer, a significant area of that Shenandoah Boulevard just south of that was just redone with... How much of that was ripped up when the Met Council replaced their main line underneath there?
That was mostly, Mr. Mayor, closer to Hanson and west of Hanson on the east-west, 100 and...
21st.
121st.
Yeah.
So yes, that is kind of the edge of the pavement and some shifting of the traffic lanes.
Oh, so it wasn't much of the street then?
No, this, it didn't go up Shenandoah, it was mainly just on that 121st, closer to those apartment buildings.
Feels like the same road, it's just a corner, but...
That's true.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on this, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And the next is to order preparation of feasibility report and preparation of plans for Project 17-3, street reconstruction, and this is going to be a mill and overlay of approximately 3 miles of residential streets, and this is literally 24 different streets, including 12 cul-de-sacs. And these are generally in an area from 123rd South to Ilex off of Foley, it looks like, and just all kinds of little hit and miss in there. You'll want to look at the map, or you'll want to check your mailbox if you live in that area. So, this is 17-2, right? Councilmember Manning?
I move adoption of Resolution 17-3, sub 3, ordering preparation feasibility report, and 17-3, sub 6, ordering preparation of plans.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Johnson. Any discussion?
Just one quick point, Mr. Mayor, this one is a mill and overlay or reconstruction, so there are some segments within this area that will be a mill and overlay based upon the age and condition. The assessments for that are different, but this isn't a full 3 miles of mill and overlay.
Yep, you're right, I missed that reconstruction or mill and overlay. All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And the next one is to order preparation of feasibility report and preparation of plans for Project 17-4, street reconstruction. Project 17-4 includes a reconstruction of approximately 2.9 miles of residential streets, and this is 21 streets. And these are all over town in the Riverdale Drive, Sunnyland Platt, Gulfview Streets, Oak Streets, yeah, a lot of them, I don't know.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson, thank you.[991.00][991.00](laughter)
I would move adoption of Resolution Number 17-4, per ends 3, ordering preparation of feasibility report, and Resolution 17-4, per end 6, ordering preparation of plans.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Any discussion? Councilmember Clint?
I just want to say thank you (laugh) for putting 121st Lane in there. I'm glad to see that it's getting done before I leave.
Here's what we know, that will not be a mill and overlay![1024.73][1024.73](laughter)
Not at all.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Sorry to miss any of these. I just... Oh yeah, no, we're... Next item on our agenda, we did have a slight revised resolution on this. This is for the... Consider Resolution 16-128, calling the bonds of 2008A. These are the general obligation improvement bonds, and the city should call improvement bonds of 2008A, principal in the amount of $320,000, for bonds due February 2018 and 2019. These bonds are paying interest rates of 4.25 percent and 4.3 percent that are higher than present, and near-term interest rates. There is sufficient cash available in the improvement fund from assessments paid early to pay off the bonds, so that's what we're looking at.
Mr. Mayor?
Maybe I can just explain this just really briefly. Essentially, this is just like making a prepayment on a mortgage, because assessments have come in faster than we anticipated, we've got cash available, the time is ripe per the bond agreements, that we can pay off bonds starting February 17th, so that's what we're doing. We're just making an extra principal payment, because we don't need that mortgage or bonds in that project.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Geisler?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 16-128, calling for a reduction of 2008 improvement bonds.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer.
And that's the revised version.
Right.
Is it the same resolution?
It's still the same 16-128.
Correct.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider... Consider Resolutions 16-126 and 16-127, establishing the 2017 fees and charges for the use of city park facilities and adult sport leagues. So this will be items with changes for the 2017 fees and charges for city park facilities, city park buildings rentals, athletic field rentals, equipment rentals, summer softball leagues, fall softball leagues, and removing a fee for men's boot hockey leagues for lack of past participation. Now, the only thing I would mention there is, the new sports director for the Twin City Gateway Visitors Bureau is the president of the national or international boot hockey league, and he's looking at facilities to bring tournaments to. So, maybe we might be a year early throwing this out, I'm just throwing that out there.
Is it against the Minnesota Constitution to charge a fee to play boot hockey?[1235.44][1235.44](laughter) Because it was always free when I grew up.[1239.03][1239.03](laughter)
I think it still is, if you go to the local park. Yeah. And will Mr. Stemwell?
I was going to mention, I think what you're thinking of, Mayor, is a broom ball, he does the broom ball leagues, and so in this case, the boot hockey...
There's a difference?
There is a difference, yeah.[1255.13][1255.13](laughter)
See, I grew up, if it didn't take Gasol Oil, it wasn't a real sport, so I don't really understand this stuff.[1263.13][1263.13](laughter)
So I think in this case, it was just sort of a non-existent thing, we were just kind of cleaning that up.
Okay.
People like to put hockey out there.
And I will say, regardless, that's just for leagues. Should anyone be interested in a tournament, we would be happy to have those conversations.
Okay. And I'm sure council probably has questions too, but the one that jumped out at me, the big question was, and I see why we're doing it, we're bringing... Wait a minute, am I in the right motion yet?
Yes.
Oh no, I'm... No, the next one is the one with the softball, softball pricing, right? Okay, never mind. I'll wait. Anybody interested in moving this one forward?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Manning?
Okay, I'll move adoption of Resolution 16-126, establishing certain fees and charges for use of city park facilities, effective January 1, 2017.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Clint. Do you want these separately, Mr. Brody, or...
You're taking them separately, so you might as well continue that.[1333.44][1333.44](laughter)
Okay, fine. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
All right, I'll continue.
Thank you.
I'll remove adoption of Resolution 16-127, establishing certain fees and charges for adult sports leagues, effective January 1, 2017.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Geisler. Any discussion?
This one is the softball one.
Is it?
Fall softball leagues increased from 500 to 525?
Nope, no, that's not it.
You want a different softball one?
Different softball one. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Well, you're right, that was a softball one, though, wasn't it?[1395.13][1395.13](laughter) Because the next one is the playground equipment.
At least a softball one.
Yeah, no, there was one, and there was increasing the price of individual fields, but it was to bring it up in line with everything else, so I'm just going to...
That's kind of why I decided to take them one at a time.[1409.03][1409.03](laughter)
Okay. Item 10, consider playground equipment expenditures for 2017 park improvements. Mr. Hammer, do you want to hit the highlights of this, or do you want me to read this discussion paragraph out of here?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take a crack at it, it gets a little confusing, but...
It's not very confusing here if I just read this.[1435.03][1435.03](laughter) Go ahead, Mr. Hammer.
We're looking to advance purchase playground equipment for the soccer complex as well as Boulevard Park, both of which are planned for some improvements next year. Boulevard Park under the referendum, and the soccer complex under miscellaneous neighborhood parks. They are on here to take advantage of a 50% grant match currently through Game Time Recreation. Certainly, there's more that goes into this, but in the end, we're just looking for maybe a little discussion on... An approval on advanced purchasing of these. It's on here because it's timely, because it expires today, so absent a decision today, we would move and program that in and add it to the budget and figure out where we land.
And this, the park commission was behind this in their meeting last night, right?
Correct. They looked at the concept, they really liked the concept for Boulevard Park, they said, "We approve this as it is." They approved the purchase of the parks and said that we should look at amending that budget, looking at park dedication options first, then going to referendum kind of as a second option, should there be dollars left over from other projects. So they were buying off, or signed off on that concept. I think we would be looking for something similar from you in the not-too-distant future, if not tonight, because that lays the groundwork for then going forward with design and getting it ready. So I... There's a lot of information here, and additional information was sent to you. I wanted to give you the big picture of things before we started looking at dollars, but Park and Rec was behind this.
Your Honor, Councilmember Manning? I think it's really important, of course, I would get that 50% grant, so, and in my opinion, we need to do this right, right from the start, instead of adding a little here, adding a little there. We have the fund to take it out of, I think the park dedication fee is, you know, if that can handle it, all of it'd be great, even though it's a little over the estimate. This is going to be a very visible park, very different from what we have, and I would hate to see it done halfway. I just think we need to go ahead with it and follow recommendations here.
Councilmember Demmer?
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I think this takes it from a good park into a really great park, I think it'll be a... Especially at the ICE Center, where you're going to have some people doing ICE stuff, and you want to have one of the kids go in and play in the park, I think it's a really good fit. I did have a couple of quick questions. One, what do we do, I don't know why I haven't asked this before, but what do we do with the old playground equipment, like at the soccer field? And with Boulevard Park, it's a brand-new park, but the old stuff at the soccer field, where does that end up?
Historically, Councilmember Demmer, we come in and we do a donation, kids around the world, there's a group that comes and will look at it, if it's in decent enough shape, they'll come out, they'll remove it, we'll work with them, they'll take it away, refurbish it, and send it to third-world countries where it gets reinstalled. So that's what we've historically done. If there's no real useful life and they're not interested, it just becomes a function of, and the contractor owns it in the end and disposes of it.
And then, just for the record on this, advancing and buying it now, we don't end up paying any extra fees, like expedited fees or anything like that, this really is a... This is the last day of the sale, and you don't pay extra for taking advantage of the sale.
That's correct. We even received a quote for the installation, which is something that will be in the project budget going forward, that's honored through 2017. So we have the cost to turnkey purchase and have this installed as part of that project.
Fantastic.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I would like to second. I think the Boulevard Park is going to be a very interesting and fun park, and having the additional funds with the match means that we can do a lot of unique things in that park, and I think it'll be a fun showcase park that everybody will want to visit, and we can incorporate to the 4th of July celebrations.
Mr. Hammer, is there any... Are we able to do any trail connections to all those new trails coming off of the River North Apartments right there, you know, right in the corner of Boulevard Park? Now, they've got a full trail that goes all the way around their perimeter, and then it just ends at the edge of their property. Is there any thought of making a connection down 109th or extending those trails there?
Mr. Mayor, we do have future plans, nothing imminent for going down 109th over to Mississippi. They constructed that piece. They do have another one that comes about midway through the site and empties into the parking lot at the ICE Center, which then has connections up to kind of the front door. And if, once you're on that sidewalk by the outdoor rink, you just go straight north and you're on the concrete going around that exterior rink, and you end up in this location anyway. So nothing imminent, it's certainly out there in the long-range plans, but if you come out of that building and you come across into the parking lot, that's going to put you on a sidewalk, which will take you to this space, which then will be connecting up to Coon Rapids Boulevard and over to 111th, as proposed in this concept plan, but 109th is not out there as of...
Okay, yeah, I suppose if you get them onto that new trail on Coon Rapids Boulevard, that's a nice place to walk. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Do you want these in two, or can they go together?
I'll make them go together.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to authorize the expenditure of $109,236 and $28,000 in 2017. and thirty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents for the purchase of playground equipment at Boulevard Park, and approving resolution sixteen dash one twenty-three, amending the park improvement fund budget, and authorizing the expenditure of thirty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents for the purchase of playground equipment for the soccer complex.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I guess, just from a, a feedback standpoint, the concept plan, as, as you see, is there something additional, another iteration we want to go through with this, or is this something that you're accepting of, like the Park and Rec Commission, so we can then start in on design?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I, I like the kind of grounds layout that you provided to us. I think that's very attractive. I'm assuming some of the surfaces are gonna be that kind of softer playground surface, the more synthetic kind of surface, so that when kids fall on it, it's got a little bit of a cushion to it. The thing that I said at our last workshop that I think is important for Boulevard Park, if we are gonna make it a signature park in the city, is to consider other signature parks in the region and see if we can get that kind of same appeal and feedback among children that they'll just want to go there. And the, the one that I always pointed to, because I grew up in that town, and, and my children who live in Coon Rapids still ask to go there on a pretty much weekly basis, is Rocket Park in Anoka. And so I like the concept of having the altitude and the draw and the dynamics of a park like that, and I think this is a good start toward that. So, to the extent that you come up with new ideas, or the Parks Commission comes up with new ideas that are really attractive to kids and will get them out there, all the better.
I will point out, Councilmember Johnson, that if you look at the concept, the darker pink shades within those play areas, is that surfacing material?
That's what I thought.
So you'll be able to have access to roughly half of this from ADA standpoint, but another portion of it would just be the wood chip mulch.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Manning?
Just one question on a raised seat wall, the square brown area, is that a overhead structure on those, or?
Councilmember Manning, the, the raised seated wall would just be kind of like a sitting retaining wall, but those are kind of umbrella canopy-type structures that are over the top to provide some of that shade component.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think when we looked at the concept plan, right, it's in the right spot, and I think that's probably the most crucial place of where it goes on the site. And if a piece of playground equipment gets moved fifteen feet and swapped with something else, I don't know if that's that critical, as long as all of the different components that we talked about for the different age groups are put into the site.
Councilmember Clint?
It doesn't show it on here, but I, I had brought it before about thinking about in which direction you put like the slides, and simply because of the sun and the heat from the sun. So I hope when we, you're going to put those structures in place, to give some thought to that.
Just thank God they're not sheet metal anymore.
Councilmember Clint, we did look at that, and, and just considering the sun and the building and what type of shade that may provide, there's, other than kind of that ten until, you know, eleven o'clock, most of the day, this is going to be in a sun condition, thus all the extra shade components that are there. I don't know that however you lay this out, you're going to eliminate some of that extra sun on the slides and other things. What we've tried to do is kind of rotate some of these things to keep some of those more interesting elements closer to that hard surface, so more people can take advantage of it by that rubberized surface. So whereas initially, we looked at it was long and linear, and we've kind of started to rotate some of those pieces to kind of shrink those containers that they're in, so you can get more in that little bit of space. But once you start to rotate, move those around, you're gonna start to add more surfacing, which starts to then add more cost. We're trying to bring it down a little bit, condense it a little bit more than trying to lay it out and really expand on that and add additional cost for additional items.
Afternoon sun's hotter than morning sun, just remember that. For little kids, going down those slides.
Good thing the splash pads there, they can run over and cool off.
I did not see a good spot where you're gonna put the big sandberg patch that I grew up with in the playground.
All right, I don't think we've got a motion on this.
We do.
Yep, we do.
Thank you very much.
We're still in discussion, right?
We are.
That was opposed. It was additional.
Thank you.
I just asked for a little friendly discussion.
Oh, that was, that's how we got into that.
The concept.
Pretty soon, I'm, I'm waxing nostalgic with Councilmember Johnson at Rocket Park, and I don't even know what's going on.
I think I got what I needed, though. Thank you.
All right. So we are on item eleven. Consider Fair Housing Implementation Council Authorization of First Amendment to Cooperative Funding Agreement Program, years two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen. Now, Ms. Bennett, the last time you brought something forward, I tried to read it, and then you were able to summarize it in like one sentence. You want to just hit the highlights on what this is?
In one sentence. Federal block grant and home communities, entitlement communities throughout the metropolitan region have joined forces to do certain planning activities that are required by HUD as recipients of those funds. One of the things that we do is a regional analysis of impediments to fair housing and a related action guide that guides basically our response to those impediments. We did this report last September. There was some pushback by housing advocacy groups that we didn't do enough community engagement in that process, reaching out to communities of color, communities with limited English proficiency, refugee communities. And so we met with HUD, and we decided to do an addendum to the analysis of impediments. HUD agreed that this would be acceptable to address that pushback that we got and requires a little more money. So this is a first amendment to that funding agreement to engage another contractor and to do some community engagement or outreach to those communities.
And I'm sorry, I called you the wrong name. I can't believe I did that. Thank you, Cheryl.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I would move to authorize you and the city manager to execute First Amendment to the Cooperative Funding Agreement for the fair housing activities, together with any necessary documents, with all the other participating jurisdictions, for all the stated purposes in the mail.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Give you that one. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Next on our agenda is the open mic. Is anybody here to address counsel for open mic this evening? All right, seeing none. We don't have any reports on previous open mics and other business. Some of the business we have to come up with, Councilmember Demmer?
So, just so everyone knows, the Frisbee golf course at Woodcrest Wintercrest Park is now open, sort of open at the very end of the year for a preview, so you can get used to it before playing next year. It, it's really just a fun thing to have in the city. It's completely free. You go with a Frisbee, you throw it around, keep score just like golf. But again, park, parking lot, bring a Frisbee, totally free from there. If, if you want to play, I'm usually, you know, usually up for a game.
So just call you?
You know, you know, I might be there. Emails are best. Yeah. So, anyway, it's, just please remember that if you go play, there's a walking path there. You know, the, people don't expect to see a Frisbee flying at them, so, so be cautious and careful about what's going on. And of course, the sledding hill is there when the snow comes, so skip the snow holes by the sledding course. And I think it'll be a, a good, good thing for the city to have this. It's definitely something that appeals to a lot of age groups and gives you something to do.
Don't you need certain kinds of Frisbees?
You can buy the special Frisbees, they help. You can just, you buy a regular Frisbee your first time out, it's just gonna take more shots. It's like playing the whole, whole round of golf with a putter. But, but yes, you can buy the, the specialized Frisbees at some of the sports stores around town.
You go play around with them.
You can play around with me. I'll let you borrow mine.
So my son, my son's got the specialized.
There you, yep.
All right, well, that's good news. Mr. Hammer, how we doing on our street? It's like November fifteenth now. Mississippi Boulevard is done. The, the soup drove by, and he stopped me on the end of the driveway, and he goes, smiling, we're done. He was very happy.
Well, there's always more to be done. Certainly, restoration is, is a key. There's still some of that to do out there. That'll probably drag into next spring, and I guess I ask for some patience from people because the seed that's going in now is dormant seed. It's not gonna turn green before the snow flies come spring. Put some water on it. By probably mid-May, early June, you should have some turf there. Certainly, if that's not the case, give us a call, we'll work with the contractor. It's a warranty-type issue. But that always takes a little bit longer, and because of this time of the year, people want that instant gratification come springtime when they're firing up their irrigation systems and things. So that, that's left. Evergreen looks great, that's done and striped, and restoration on that one as well. We did have some issues with, with rain this summer, so things took a little longer than expected, but all in all, I think ten miles of state aid roads, two industrial parks, total water main replacement, your neighborhood with a hundred and some individual services. Certainly, it didn't go without hiccups, but overall, four separate contracts, four separate contractors, there was a lot of work, engineering worked really hard, so I want to give that credit to Mark and his staff. They are, they're the ones that took the brunt of it. So they, they did an awesome job, and we're already getting prepared for next year, as this agenda tells you.
Councilmember Manning?
Speaking of roads, and I know this is county, and I want to make sure everybody out there understands that Foley Boulevard is not the city road.
You said exactly what I was gonna say.
So we're not responsible for the fact that they're probably not gonna finish. It doesn't look like it. There is six inches possible snow this weekend. What happens if the snow stays out? I mean, hopefully it won't, but is this gonna be like this the whole winter?
Councilmember Manning, right now, they're pretty much wrapping up what they're doing as far as the water main work. So getting all the temp water out of there, getting people hooked up, that first section from roughly one hundred and eighth to the south. They're gonna continue with stormwater as long as they possibly can, that there's really not a lot of impacts to residents with that. So they're gonna keep going with that as long as they can. Yeah, they are talking about rain, snow, so depending on where that cold line arrives, we may have more rain than snow, but then they're talking potentially sixty degrees again next week. So I wouldn't anticipate it sticking around. They're gonna have to do a little bit of work to make it a little better condition as we head into winter and maintain that one way in each direction.
So there's really no chance of them, that, that first layer of asphalt and...
The original plan was to finish it by, by the end of this construction season, at least up to one hundred and thirteenth.
Correct.
And, and so it looks like that's not gonna be able to be feasible.
Did, did they get a late start on this, or what's the reason they're behind?
There was an extremely late start. We had some issues with the watershed, kind of our wellhead protection, so we had to kind of change some of the stormwater. And if you remember, we did some of that under our Dogwood project, and now we're working with the county, and we should have a updated or revised JPA coming back to you on how, we've got a, a deal on how we intend to cost share in that, but you all have to ratify that. So it, it was supposed to start in April, May timeframe, and it didn't get started until August timeframe. So they were behind the eight ball right from the start. It was just between the watershed issues and their staffing issues, they've, they've got a lot to come out of.
I'm just guessing, there's an awful lot of unique colorful language being used as people driving up and down there. It's not the easiest road to go up and down right now.
Let's just look forward to next year.
Right, huh?
Let's just look forward to next year, then.
Yeah, so chances are real good it's not. It's gonna be one thing for the winter.
For a winter. For that segment, absolutely.
All right. Other business for council? Mr. Stemwell?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll just mention a few things. Next week, we, city offices are closed Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving, and traditionally, we're closed the day after Thanksgiving. Heads up on that. Just a reminder to council about the next couple of weeks for meeting schedule. We're not meeting next week on the twenty-second. We do have a work session planned for November twenty-ninth, which is the fifth, fifth Tuesday of the month. So given we had the election last week, Thanksgiving week next week, I punted on the work session to that last Tuesday. And then finally, I just wanted to say thank you. Joan's not here tonight, but says Stephanie Joan, Melissa, and everybody who helped out with the election. It was absolute chaos, I shouldn't say, controlled chaos, for the last week leading up to the election here. We just had a extraordinary number of absentee and early voters, and so the city clerk staff had to work extremely hard to get those people through to vote, and it was a lot of additional work and a lot of hard work during Election Day as well. And so I'm sure they, more than anyone, are glad that we've wrapped that up and we can move on to the next one, so.
It came through on Saturday, I think it was Saturday was, when the line was all the way down around to the senior center, and, yeah, wow.
I had heard that there was over seven thousand people then, pre-voted.
Wow, huge numbers. And speaking of the election, we had the four council seats, and I would really like to thank everybody that ran. I would like to offer my congratulations to Brad Ruskowiak, Ward One, and Bill Kicker in Ward Two, Jenny Geisler in Ward Four, and then of course, Steve Wells, Councilmember at Large. And I'd like to thank the, the folks who put it in the ring, I mean, that stepped up to run, and Julia Stevens, and Greg Leon, and Chuck Flipstick. You know, that's, that's a lot of work, and it's a lot of yourself to put out there, and I just thank, thank everybody involved, and we're gonna move forward with a good council here. So, all right. Any other business to come before council this evening? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Clint, second by Johnson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Return.